Seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us. This is our Monday, June 21st, 2021, regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. For those of you in the audience, thank you for joining us. If you could please silence your cellphones until the end of the meeting and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Singer, please take role.
Absolutely. President McFarland.
Here.
Vice President Roush.
Here.
Secretary Singer is here. Treasurer Lotterbach.
Here.
Member Baker.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Hatfield.
Here.
All accounted for.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving right into our consent agenda, we have item 2.1, which lists a number of folks recommended for employment. Item 2.3 is a number of teachers attaining tenure status. Item 2.4, as identified in the agenda, lists employees and their resignation, and as well their effective dates of the resignation. Item 2.5 is the approval of the payment school system bills in the amount of $7,325,769. And item 2.6 is a requested approval for the payment through an law firm in the amount of $53.
I will make a motion to approve items 2.1 through 2.6 in the consent agenda.
Support. Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Lotterbach. Any discussion regarding the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, item 3.1, shining stars. Mr. Sherrill.
We are only going to do one this month, and it is Mr. Brian Bruton. So I'll read a little bit about Brian. Brian joined the MPS team in 2014 as Associate Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment before coming to Midland Public Schools. Brian had been part of the Algonite Community School staff for 12 years, holding many different positions. Here are just a few: teacher, coach, athletic director, IB coordinator, assistant principal, principal, and interim superintendent. He earned his Bachelor's of Science degree from Defiance College in 2002, his Master's degree from the University of Illinois Springfield in 2008, and his Educational Specialist degree from Oakland University in 2011. Brian was nominated for a shiny star by an MPS colleague. Among their comments were the following: "In Brian's six-plus years in Midland Public Schools, he has most successfully filled all three Associate Superintendent roles." When Brian joined the MPS team in May of 2014, he began his role as Associate Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. In 2018, Brian moved to the position of Associate Superintendent of Administration, Student Services, and Innovative Programs. In 2019, with retirement of Bob Cooper, Brian transitioned into his current role of Associate Superintendent of Finance, Facilities, and Operations. Brian is the ground running in 2014 and hasn't stopped since. Some very notable accomplishments for Mr. Bruton has had oversight of: development and rollout of the district STEM strategic plan, including launch a project lead-away STEM curriculum district-wide; selection and implementation of the 5D+ Teacher Evaluation Tool and its pivot software; implementation of a data mining tool, illuminate DNA; instrumental in the onset planning and work with closing student achievement gaps; startup of the PAST program. Now, let's throw in a pandemic, a shutdown, K-12 virtual learning, and so many more unknowns in the mix. Mr. Bruton has ordered mountains of PPE and sanitation products while the rest of the world was ordering them as well. He kept the district's finances and payroll running successfully, proposed, set, and achieved an exemplary audit at 2019-20 district budget, and the list goes on and on. In each of the MPS high-level administrative roles, the learning curve has been steep and fast. No matter what has been asked, Brian tackles his assignment as tirelessly and consummate educational professional he is. Brian is a valued member of the Midland Public Schools Agenda Group. Congratulations, Brian.
Well done, Brian. Thank you very much for everything you do for us.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Item 3.2, we have an action item. This is the Michigan High School Athletic Association. Mr. Sherrill.
MHSAA is a private organization, so schools must elect to join that and follow the rules. So we are asking you to approve participating in the 21-22 school year with our four secondary buildings.
I move to approve item 3.2 to join the MHSAA.
I support.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Singer, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any further discussion regarding item 3.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, Pam. Next up, we have another action item, 3.3. This is our 2020-21 final budget amendment. Mr. Bruton.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. McFarland. I appreciate that. And if, Megan, if you could queue me up, I'd appreciate it. While she is doing that, I'm going to do one presentation. It's short. I won't put you through what I did last board meeting. There's only four slides here, but this will pertain to both action item 3.3 and 3.4. So just one presentation, and then we'll ask you to take action on both of them. So tonight is the culmination of the multi-month-long budget process, and as I just mentioned, there are two things we're going to do tonight. First is I'm going to ask you to approve our final fiscal year '21 budget amendment, and then I'm going to ask for your approval on next year's of the fiscal year '22 budget that was presented to you at the last Board of Education meeting. There are not going to be any substantial changes to that budget in terms of revenues and expenditures, but the bottom line, the general fund, is going to change based on what I'm telling you right now with this budget amendment. And I'll show you those strikeouts so you know exactly what it is that you are voting on tonight. So the official disclaimer slide has not changed from the last Board of Education meeting. I got a little bit excited for a few minutes when I saw a few headlines, and I'm thinking, all right, we might have a state budget. And then Mike walked over to the office and said, you know better than that. You're almost 20 years into this game. You know that that didn't occur. So we still do not have a state of Michigan budget that is finalized yet. We continue to hear rumors, but there is nothing that we are going to act upon tonight. It's not changing any of the projections that we gave you. In addition, bullet point number two, there has been a little bit more movement on the release of ESER II and ESER III funds. We're anticipating that our prediction of being able to collect them in this fiscal year is still going to be true for what I deemed last board meeting as ESER IIa, the first portion of that. We are still pushing ESER IIb and ESER III into the next fiscal year, and we'll see if those predictions pan out. If they do or they don't, as I told you before, either way, we're going to get the money. It's just going to change what you're going to see in the audit based on if those predictions come true or not. So those are the official disclaimers of some of the basis behind the numbers tonight. So I present to you for the fiscal year '21 final budget amendment, some good news, some positive news for this fiscal year. I actually wrote a quote down from the presentation I gave at this meeting last year, and I said this: "In a good year, there are large fluctuations between amendments. This year will likely be the most volatile in MPS history." And boy, has that held true for us. So if you follow our original prediction last June, we were anticipating a deficit of around $8.1 million. Once we moved into January, things become a little bit more optimistic for us. From the last meeting, they protected our enrollment for us. We actually had a $65 per student increase. It was a one-time increase. And then the federal stimulus dollars started rolling in. There were some from the state, and there were a whole bunch of different buckets that started coming into us. And as we have started to finalize the numbers, the very far column on the right, you'll see that now with a 1.5% budget variance predicted, we are predicting to be to the positive around $424,000 from an original projected deficit a year ago of 8.1 million. And again, in recorded MPS history, I have not found a bigger variance or fluctuation. So our predictions of the pandemic variances were quite true. Again, these numbers could change based on what we see from the ESER funds, but to be honest with you, I only see them changing to the positive for us. So this is a conservative budget estimate prediction that we have right now. If you look at those lines in quick glances, you'll see that really the only substantial change for us in our prediction from January to June was in terms of our revenues. We have about $3.7 million additional dollars, with the largest piece of that being federal supplemental funds. But we did have a couple other things that came in between January and June: retirement adjustments that were to our favor, some tax adjustments that were to our favor as well. Our expenditures, you see, only changed about $23,000, so we feel that we were pretty accurate in that realm. So the only real change, again, was in the revenues that we now feel that we are going to realize in this fiscal year. So if all of those predictions come true, that means that we are going to estimate that our final unassigned fund balance, that's truly our rainy day fund, our savings account that is not designated for any sort of future expenses, at around 21.2% of our final budget, just over $20 million. If you put everything together in our general fund, which includes our savings silos for things like technology and copiers, our STEM grants, et cetera, that would put us right under $25 million, right around $24.9 million, or 26.4% of our fund balance. And as a reminder, I don't want to insult your mathematical abilities. If you compare audit to audit, last audit, it said that we were at a 30% fund balance. We did not go down. We're adding, but our expenditures went up so drastically because of the pandemic. When your denominator's higher, it changes your percentages, which is, we always remind you, pay attention to the actual number and not the percentages so much because it can sometimes change based on the volatility of what your expenditures are in a year. So with this general fund amendment, that does change the numbers that I presented to you last week for our '21-22. As said just a few minutes ago, I didn't touch the revenues. I didn't touch the expenditures. Our variance anticipation is still at 1.5%. The only numbers that have changed for you in your board packet are those bottom-line numbers of what we are estimating our realized unassigned fund balance to be. Because of our predictions that we are not going to dip into fund balance, that we're going to actually add to it, that changes your year-end balance from a predicted $15.3 million to just over $19 million, which comes out to 21.3% of your unassigned fund balance, and right around 26.5% for the total fund balance as well, too. So again, no major changes there, other than the bottom line based on what we're bringing to you in the budget amendment. And so with that, it wraps up my presentation for this evening, and there are two separate action items. Again, 3.3 is for the revised fiscal year '21, and then 3.4 is for the fiscal year '22 budget.
Any questions?
So, Brian, in the revised FY 2021 budget, you've got the ESER IIa funds as revenue.
I do.
And not IIb or III.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I'd just like to make a comment that here we have to approve a budget by the end of June, and our legislature doesn't have to approve a budget, and it's real hard for us to, you know, make these assumptions without that state budget in place. So I would encourage our board members and any members of the community to contact our legislators and let them know how important it is to us to have that budget complete. We need to know what we're getting per pupil. We need to know our funding coming in.
Both Mr. Lotterbach and I had separate conversations with Senator Stomace today, and it sounds like maybe mid-July is their goal at this point, to complete the budget process. And so our discussion's a little bit on the equity and the funding there because right now it would not be very favorable to MPS compared to other districts and how they're doing the dollars. John, I got about what you got. I'm not sure I fully understand what he's saying, but he says he understands our position, and we'll see how it all comes out in the wash, meaning there could be other categories that make up for that, but we'll see where that goes. But I think I sent you some of those alerts or you got from MASB. It's not real favorable to 33 of the districts in the state of Michigan, which includes ourself.
Okay. Well, let's start with item 3.3. I'll take a motion, please.
I'll move to accept item 3.3.
Support. Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Mr. Lotterbach. Any further discussion regarding item 3.3? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 3.4. Motion, please.
I move approval of item 3.4, approval of the '21-22 general operating budget.
Support. Motion by Mr. Lotterbach, support by Mr. Roush. Any discussion regarding item 3.4? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. That brings us to request to address the board. We have a number of folks with us tonight. Just a reminder, everybody, we are here to, of course, listen to your comments and thoughts and remarks, but we will not be engaging in any active dialogue. So when you come to the podium, please be mindful of the five-minute timer because there are a number of people wishing to address the board tonight. And so with that being said, Sarah Ladman, the floor is yours. Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Hi. Good evening. I'm here tonight primarily to talk to you about concerns over the upcoming school year. I've seen some of the plans online. I don't know how hard and fast those are, but I just, I'm coming to you with a plea for some normalcy for the kids for next year. No masks, none of this other craziness that we've gone through. I think the numbers that we're seeing that are being tracked in Michigan are incredibly positive right now. And, you know, with the other mandates being, going away this week as well, I think it's looking really positive. So I want you all to start focusing, again, on educating the kids. I'm not saying that you didn't. I'm not trying to make that sound like I'm taking away the things that you tried to in the tough decisions of last year. But going forward, I think it's really, really, really important that we go back to look at the education of our kids. And the reason I want to, I want to talk to you in terms of that is I think it's important to understand how little risk our kids have been of COVID. And this was not known last year. A lot of decisions were made in a vacuum, but we have so much data and so much information right now. And I just want to share that with you. I've been tracking it religiously for the last year, and I just want to take the opportunity. And anytime, at any way you want to ask, I can, I can load you up with stacks of information and statistics on the things and how COVID affects people: age ranges, masks, et cetera. I have it. But I just wanted to run through it real quickly if I can. Again, if you go to CDC and you look at deaths for children, school-aged children, it shows zero for the state of Michigan. If you look at statistics and other causes of death, children are more likely to die from choking, from a car accident, from drowning, from poisoning, from suicide, homicide, and your typical annual flu year. All of those things are typically deadlier to children of school age. And we don't stop living, driving, swimming, eating because of those risks. So why do we stop letting our kids live normal lives and going to school? Furthermore, the, the story that children, we have to make our kids mask and shield and all these things to protect adults. Adults have all had the opportunity now to be vaccinated if they so choose. Furthermore, children were never vectors of spread, ever. They were never vectors of spread. Now, our local health department didn't track that information, but many other schools and districts and states did. And they're just, all those kids who are quarantined, you sent home healthy kids who never became positive. Nearly all transmission goes from adults to children. Now, on mask, very quickly, there are study after study after study. And last spring, when they first started talking about mask mandates, I went and I researched. And I've got studies for you from 2011, 2016, 2008, 2012, 2015, and every single one of those cases about virus transmission of the flu all show no statistical differentiation between masked populations and unmasked populations. An interesting study, 2019, in a Chicago hospital shows 90% of all hospital staff self-contaminate when they doffered on their PPE. 90% of hospital staff, when they know what they're doing and they're taking sterile, invite, you know, PPE. Our kids are stuffing them in their, well, I do it, too. Stuff it in their pocket, in the purse on the floor, tennis bag, whatever, put it back on their face. There was a recent study done by parents in Florida that sent their children's masks to be studied. You would not believe the disgusting things they found on those masks. So it isn't that there's no harm being done either. There's bacteria growing like crazy on those things, and then they're covering their faces for eight hours a day. It's not healthy for our kids. All that being said, I am here to beg you to consider going back to normal for our kids and make some sort of a commitment to us as parents because even though it breaks my heart to say this, I love MPS. We've been here. I just graduated one. It has been a horrible school year. And I'm not going to put my kids through that again. I just will not. And so I'm begging you for some sort of commitment about what the school will look like next year because if it's going to look like last year, this family will not be part of MPS anymore. And that breaks my heart. I don't want to go that way. But I also cannot stand the child abuse, which is what happened last year with those kids being masked all day, every day. Can't do it. So please, I pray, that you will take my words into consideration. I know there's some talk about, well, if they're vaccinated, but then you're, you're creating a situation of discrimination. You're going to have scarlet letters, yellow stars, whatever you want to call it. That kid's vaccinated. That one's not. That one has to be punished, wearing that filthy mask on their face all day. Well, that one's not. Please, just don't allow that situation either. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay. Next, we have Lisa Hanson. Hi, Lisa. Welcome back. Thank you.
Okay. Let me begin by saying how much I really, truly appreciate this opportunity to address the board and the community because I know there are a lot of people that aren't able to be with us tonight that are watching either live or will watch after the fact. So it's important. And I could not be more impressed with the parents in the room tonight. So thank you for being here because it is important. You need to understand that there are a lot of people that want normalcy again for our kids and to protect our kids. So in an attempt to not get emotional, I typed this out. So I do want to say publicly, I'm disappointed. Nobody reached out to me this past couple of weeks because I'm here. I want to work with you, so I'm just putting that back out there again. But when I got the communique on, I think it was June 14th, I thought, oh, yay, we're making progress because it said, "Those who wish to continue to use masks and safety protocol will be welcome to do so." We just want choice. We just want choices for our kids. But then I watched the Michigan Safer Schools Future of Testing video between the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and the Department of Education. Now, I don't know, you probably know things that I don't know, but based on the video that I watched, which was lengthy, my understanding is that the proposed 500 HRA's, Health Resource Advocates, will be recommended but not required. They want to COVID test our athletes and our non-vaccinated students every week. And I am beyond disturbed by this. You preach DEI, but you want to segregate students. That is not inclusive. And I am praying to God that you make the right call on this and that you do not follow this because it is so wrong. Okay. Nobody has the right to ask who's vaccinated or not. And there is a big difference between FDA-approved and FDA-authorized. This vaccine is not FDA-approved for safety. It is only authorized for emergency use. You cannot mandate an emergency-use vaccine, and you have no business segregating students. You also should not be testing students without parent consent, and I do not consent. My daughter's husband, or my ex-husband, my daughter's father, does not consent. This is madness, and it's got to end. And here's the deal. We all know that you have the power to end it. We are begging and pleading for you to do the right thing for our kids, and I know you're getting pressure from other places, but we are the parents, and this is our community. We, the parents, we, the people, need to know that you will not allow testing for the upcoming school year. True health is a state of optimal physical, mental, and social well-being, not just merely the absence of disease. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is pushing this whole-of-child guidance but not considering anything other than COVID. We've gone from counting deaths to counting cases. These cases are based on faulty PCR and antigen tests. So many kids that tested positive had to quarantine. They missed out on face-to-face school, sports experience, and memories, and then never had symptoms. We'll never, ever, ever know the mental and emotional damage we've caused our kids from the mitigation tactics and masks and testing, not to mention the 24/7 fear that our leaders, media, and Big Tech have pumped into our society and our kids. Enough is enough, and we deserve a choice. And I just want to read two emails because this stuff is coming out now. So on Tuesday, February 4th of 2020, "Most transmissions occur from someone who is symptomatic, not asymptomatic. This whole thing is predicated on asymptomatic spread, and it's just not true." That was Tony Fauci. And another one, "Masks are really for infected people to prevent them from spreading infection to people who are not infected rather than protecting uninfected people from acquiring infection." February 5th, 2020, Tony Fauci. So I want to keep my daughter in Midland Public Schools for so many reasons. And prior to all the illegal and unconstitutional mandates, I have always been proud of our school district, and I love this community. So we need you to stand up for our kids and their rights. And I hope it doesn't come to this, but I will seek out legal counsel because this is absolutely ridiculous. You have the power to stop the madness, and we need you to fight for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay. Next, we have Judy Kawicki. Hi, Judy. Welcome. Thank you.
In case we seem to walk alike, she's my daughter. I'm not naive enough to think that your decisions are made at or from these meetings. With all I'm learning, I'm beginning to wonder, though, if you all are powerful as a board or powerless, depending on promised grants and funds, rather than being driven by what is best full circle for the MPS students. Remember when we were indoctrinated in pride of our country, being proud of our history? My parents were teachers. My dad was on the school board. My family was part of the Underground Railroad in Illinois. Look how far we've come. Born and raised in Midland, I was taught to live by the golden rule. We were taught Jesus loved the little children, all the children of the world. Success was based on merit: teams, college, jobs, elections. Current culture, you and we have a chance to shape it. Will it stay the current trend or can we get back to current morals? Risk is the price you pay for opportunity. Children are what they live. I grew up watching The Little Rascals, Lone Ranger, Charlie Chan, Ricky Ricardo. I never questioned their ethnic background. I liked them all. If I were a kid today watching video games and even the commercials that are on TV, I would grow up to be a very different person than I did. You get more of what you focus on. You and I, maybe, can't change the world, but we can intentionally and consciously make sure that our kids today are not subjected to teachings that will taint their view of the human race. Our country's history is what it is, the good, the bad, and the ugly. Clearly, we have learned from it. It is wrong to recreate it as we would like it to have been, but it is right to continue on from here to teach it as it was and to make it better and better for the future of every single citizen. Thomas Sowell is an economist, social theorist, a bright patriot, a former Marine born in the South and grew up in Harlem. He wrote these words. Have we reached the ultimate stage of absurdity where some people are held responsible for things that happened before they were born while other people are not held responsible for what they themselves are doing today? We're hearing a lot about critical race theory. I prefer to just teach and live in the human race. I pray it's not another acronym for DEI. It feels more like DIE, Division, Inequality, and Exclusion. Skin tone, vaccinations, masks, whatever happened to HIPAA. My body, my choice. MYOB, mind your own business. Why not just put a red letter on non-vaccinated students? That was already said tonight. Something subtle, maybe. Seems like it's time for another Me Too movement focusing on similarities rather than differences. I live in Midland. Me too. I have a mom and a brother. Me too. I love biking. Me too. I love sports. Me too. Could we please focus our kids on similarities? Please stand up and speak up for what's best for our kids long-term. Here's another popular acronym, EGO, E-G-O. It stands for edging God out. Scrap these crazy new ideas. Change back to the basics and move on. You can change your life anytime, so whatever you are changing... your life anytime, so whatever you are changing, you are choosing. Change is a choice. Choose not the popular thing, but the right thing for our students. That is what you can be known for. School of choice, we are very few voices here tonight, for the many parents waiting to see what you will choose to offer our kids in the fall. Today, I called MPS to find out how to unenroll students from Midland Public Schools. Seems there's no form for that yet. You see, continued COVID testing is infringing on the rights of our students. Proof is coming out that it is harmful for them. If serving is below you, then leadership is beyond you. I pray for your hearts to be strong and for your minds to be changed and for your souls to find peace. We are watching you. Please stop following the money, being wagged at you, and instead, lead our students. I don't want to stay sad and ashamed any longer.
Thank you, Judy. Next up, we have John Kowicki. Welcome back, sir.
Thanks for letting us come back. I have to tell you, this afternoon, I spent an hour and five minutes of an hour and 33-minute board meeting from last July 20th. It was interesting. I didn't leave enough time to finish it all, but I'll finish it tonight. And it was on the DEI program. So what I want to talk about, a couple of things. DEI, number two, Experimental Gene Therapy Medical Injection, what it really is, their words, and testing. So since yesterday was Father's Day, I pulled this picture out of my father, and that's from World War II, somewhere in the world. And I'm going to tell you, he was a spectacular human being. Not because he was my father, I was just lucky. He was a spectacular human being. So on those four things, I wrote, or on those three things, I wrote down four things that he taught me, and I think they're crucial. And we are the city of churches. I've seen that advertised. That's not my, that's an advertisement I've seen in Midland, city of churches. Most of those churches are Christian-based. My father, we went to Blessed Sacrament. I went to Blessed Sacrament School, I went to Northeast, and I went to Midland High. And his teachings were based on Christianity and faith. Spectacular man, I'm telling you. First one, it's my responsibility to get along with others. It's not their responsibility. If they're in my space, it's my job as a man to get along with them. That's what he taught me every day. Number two, he believes in personal responsibility. If I don't like my circumstances, what can I do to change my circumstances? Not what somebody else can do for me. Number three, I love this one. Take a genuine interest in others, and you'll always have friends. And he said, the key word is genuine. A genuine interest in others, you'll always have friends. And number four, if you can laugh at yourself, no one can hold anything over your head. That, I call that critical life theory. Those four concepts, if you base your life around those four concepts, there's only one way to go, and that's up. My opinion from my father. This, I'm 74 years old. I'm not a kid. I've been around a while. I've been around a few blocks. I've actually been around a few I shouldn't have been around. It's life. You reevaluate. This kind of all really started for me at the Midland High Rally a few months ago. Lisa called me and said there's going to be a rally. I said, well, maybe I better get off my couch and get over there. And I'm actually starting to look forward to these board meetings. But if we don't get our voices out there, how are people going to know? You people have the power. And Midland is a special place, and I'd like to see it remain special. It's been wonderful for my parents, their children, and it's been wonderful for my children, now my granddaughter. Oh, yeah, I forgot to say, I'm here for my granddaughter. I got to get that in. I got more than my, oh, geez, only 25 minutes. Okay, I'll skip that, I'll skip that, I'll skip that. I'm going to go right to testing. I only got a minute and 17 seconds. This is the first time in our history in the world do we have to prove that we're not sick. There's something wrong with that. We have to prove that we're not sick when, for school-aged children, the numbers I've heard from my research, 99.2 to 99.997 survival rate. That's if you get it. And what I've noticed is, I don't hear a lot of these professionals telling what you can do upfront to not get it. Or if you do, if you do this, your chances, if you get it, are even greater. I'm not for testing. I've had to have a couple tests myself because of some surgery I had to have. I had to have it, or I don't get the surgery, and it wouldn't have turned out real well for me if I had not had surgery. I was already mentioned, why does my granddaughter have to account for things that happened before she was born? That is unbelievable. I'm not taking responsibility for things that happened before I was born, and she shouldn't have to when her brain isn't developed until she's 25 years old. Thank you. Oh, I didn't even get there.
Thank you, John. We appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to address the board? Ma'am?
Hello, thanks for having me here. I'm Malia Retzloff. I was actually here last month, and I asked the board to create a plan for what the next school year will look like. I understand that that is in motion right now, and we just wanted to make sure it was early enough, for those of us parents that have concerns, that we have the ability to make choices as to whether MPS is going to work out for our children. I know a lot of what I am planning to talk about has already been touched on by most of the people that have been here. One of my topics was testing, and then the other was some DEI information. So basically, I think it's vital that the governor, the MDHHS, and all other state agencies seize the mandates on our kids. It's ridiculous. We cannot have another school year like we did last year. I have two children in the school district, one that's going to be a junior, one that's going to be a freshman, both going into high school. And I'm not here to brag about my kids, because I'm sure there are just as many kids like mine, but mine are goal-oriented, they're dedicated to their studies, they're dedicated to their sports. My daughter wants to go to U of M. She knows that she needs to bust her butt, do everything she can. She takes the IB courses. She's a national honor student. She is amazing, and she is training all year long to swim, to make it to state. She's in the marching band. Like, she wants this experience, and I want it for her. My son is busting his butt on the field right now to try to play soccer for Dow High. It's everything he's dreamed of. He wants off the rec field, and he wants on the high school field. But I'm willing to take all those away from him if it means I have to go through what we went through last year. I can't have that for them. My kids just came off of testing for the last three, four months. Never a positive case. It was a pain in the butt. It wasn't revolving around their practices. 7:00 PM, stop dinner, go get your test. It's unreal. They don't need it. My husband and I go to work every single day. We don't get tested, and I'm higher risk for dying from this virus than they'll ever be. And so it's got to stop. And the plan that's set forth by the governor, the health department, absolutely unnecessary. It's just, it's derogatory, and it's basically abuse of our children, and they don't deserve that. And then going on to the DEI, if we're going to be an inclusive school, and we teach equity and inclusivity, we cannot bring that upon our kids, whether they're vaccinated or they're not vaccinated. That's just segregation to its best, and we cannot have that within our school district. And then, my husband and I actually had a meeting with Penny Miller Nelson and then DeAndre, and we had a great conversation. They shared with us that it is inclusivity for all students, regardless of race, gender, everything. And I appreciate that. But there's just so many instances that we're hearing across the country that are completely different than that. And I just want to make sure that MPS stays true to their values and to their word, that they will stay inclusive of all students. And so I don't want my children to think that they live in a terrible country, that people around them hate each other. That's just not productive. We can't have that within our, within our society as a whole. My children are taught to love one another, and I believe that we're all given the same, God-given rights, to be prosperous and happy citizens within this country. And there's no reason why that should be segregated amongst any different sort of race or anything like that. So just want to make sure that MPS stays true to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Malia. Anybody else? Going once? Twice? Okay, the floor is closed. Thank you very much for everybody who came up to express your opinions tonight. We certainly appreciate it. That said, we are going to move on. We have item number 5.1, I'm sorry, item five. This is Administrative Services, and Mr. Blasey, I believe, has some notes for us. Study committee minutes.
Yes, on June 1st, we met. We went through our Neola policy updates, things that just had to be updated. There's 27 different policies. I'm not going to read through them all, but we, we read through all of them. We went through them item by item, and we recommend all 27 of these to be approved tonight. That was the gist of our meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Brad. Which brings us to an action item, 5.2. These are the board policy revisions referenced by Mr. Blasey for their approval.
I move to approve item 5.2, Board Policy Revisions.
I support.
Motion by Ms. Singer, support by Mr. Hatfield?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion regarding item 5.2? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our CIA, item 6.1, and this will be Lynn with minutes.
Yes, Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Study Committee met on May 17th, and the first topic was post-secondary program overview and visit. The committee visited the MPS post-secondary program at the Greater Midland Community Center. Jessica Brunzel, Director of Special Services, and the teacher Lori Hedrick provided an overview. The program serves students up to age 26 with an emphasis on developing the knowledge and skills for independent living, employment, and overall well-being. Students introduced themselves and described their workplaces and overall experience. Committee members enjoyed interacting with students and learning more about this important MPS educational program. Next, we talked about diversity, equity, and inclusion. DeAndre Hogan, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, shared information about the selection process for the Equity Audit Contract. He shared details about the timeline and scope of work to be completed pending board approval of the contract with Insight Education Group. The process will include multiple touchpoints with stakeholders to gather perception data, and there will be thorough review of quantitative data as well. The process will be open and transparent, with updates provided regularly to stakeholders. And we had some other curriculum updates. Penny indicated that a new textbook resource for the IB Theory Knowledge, Theory of Knowledge course will be shared for information at the May 17th board meeting. The recommended resource followed the current district process, being reviewed thoroughly by staff and administration. And we adjourned, and our meetings will resume in the fall. And just one comment, the post-secondary visit, I've done that several times in my tenure on the board, and it is amazing what Lori Hendrick does with her students. They actually said, I believe they're going to have 24 students next year, which is almost a record, that she does a marvelous job. You may see her sometimes out in the community. I've met her down with students at the farmer's market, at Kroger's. So it is just a top-notch program, and really kind of brings tears to your eyes.
Fantastic.
One thing I wanted to add, too, is we talked a little bit about using the acronym DIE, and how we would like to remove that from use. We would like to use diversity, equity, and inclusion. And at least for our committee, we talked about how when we use the three words, we remind ourselves what this is all about. And sometimes when we get into a lot of acronyms, you don't really think about what those acronyms mean.
That's a good point, Pam. Thank you. Okay. That brings us to our action item, item 6.2. This is textbook adoption. Penny?
Good evening. I do have a textbook for your adoption, for your action tonight, as Lynn indicated at the last meeting and at our committee meeting. We discussed the IB Theory of Knowledge text. It's called IB Theory of Knowledge Print and Online Coursebook PAC, the 2020 edition, and this is from Oxford Press, which is a typical vendor of ours. So we ask for your approval of this for use in both of our high schools and the IB TOK class, and ultimately, the purchase will be contingent upon available months.
Okay, thank you.
I move to approve the purchase of the IB Theory of Knowledge Print and Online Coursebooks. Support?
Motion by Ms. Singer, support by Ms. Baker. Any further discussion regarding item 6.2? All in favor?
Hey Penny, how often do we have to update these books?
So IB has a typical curriculum review and evaluation cycle that's typically around five years. We try to stretch that a bit, just due to financial considerations. I don't know off the top of my head the last time you purchased this book, but it certainly has been more than five years.
Okay. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Next up, next action item, rather, is item 6.3. This is our Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, our monthly review. Penny?
Yes, we are so hoping this is the last month that we have to share this report with you. And Jeff and I are prepared tonight to share the monthly report, and I'll add to your attention that when you take action on this, it will include the goal data. That wasn't called out specifically in the agenda, but we're going to bundle those two together. So we'll cruise through these first few slides, which will look very familiar to you. We had no modifications made to the written Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan. All of our students were in-person learning in the month of May and into June, and of course, those who chose the virtual option completed their school year accordingly. This data was, is exactly the same as it's been since January with the semester transition, representing that the vast majority of our students are taking advantage of in-person learning. And that includes in those student groups of economically disadvantaged English language learners and those receiving special education services. This information might look similar, but these are the summary of the public comments that we've received since the last monthly confirmation. We've had questions about virtual learning options for elementary and middle school for next year. We've had several inquiries about wearing masks at school and school events for the remainder of the school year. We had several inquiries about the mask and vaccination requirements for next fall, and several notes of appreciation to district administration for navigating this really unprecedented year and considering the multiple competing interests when making decisions. I'll turn it over to Mr. Jaster to discuss our two-way interaction rates.
Thanks, Penny. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the last of the weekly two-way interaction rates, so the attendance since the May board meeting. And to start with, I think I'll just call your attention to the first column and point out that, again, the threshold here, we have to be above 75%. So going back to the week of May 10th, we were at 94%. The week of May 17th, 94%. The week of May 24th, 88%. And you could see that is where we started to dip slightly. But the correlating factor that we really believe caused this reduction was not just end of the school year. That's where we lost a good chunk of our senior students. Some of them did remain in school till the end of the year, but those who were graduating on time finished on May 21st. So those 94s and the mid 90s that we had seen up until that point fell into the mid 80s, when we lost about 600 kids total from the district. So our rates went down. Those that were 100% remote, you could still see a similar pattern, but we can attribute that to more students were finishing courses near the end of the year. And so once the courses were complete, they didn't need to continue either. But again, column one, that threshold to be above was 75%, so clearly we met that for the entire school year. So, clearly, we met that for the entire school year. And then, again, that pattern continued in the last column, the not 100% remote, falling from the mid-90s into the mid-70s to low 70s.
The last part of our report for you this month is our end-of-year data for our two academic goals. You may remember that part of the Public Act required us to do a chart assessment that we reported or gave out to you in February, and this is our end-of-year. Our two goals are essentially the same. We indicated that all students' grades K-8, or DK-8 as appropriate, would improve their performance in both reading and math, and that would be measured from fall to winter and then winter to spring using the NWEA Math Growth Assessment. So, these reports will be published on our transparency link on the website, and we also submit these through the MDE Data Hub as part of our requirement. You can see in February, for all students, we had 72.9% of our students show improvement from that fall to winter. And the June column, 55.9% of all students showed improvement from that winter to June assessment. We are required to break that out into student groups, as you see represented on your screen, including students who were 100% remote learning and those who were not 100% remote learning. This is our data for the reading goal, and this represents our data for Goal 2, which was math improvement. Again, all students, for this final assessment, we had 75.3% of students show improvement, and again, broken out into those required groups. That is the conclusion of our report, and you're welcome to take action on that.
All right. Thank you, Penny. With that being said, I will accept the motion regarding item 6.3.
Make a motion to approve item 6.3, Extended COVID Learning Plan?
Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Lauterbach. Any further discussion regarding item 6.3?
Penny, can you remind us how long we've been using the NWEA?
Yes. So, this is our first year really doing that across the board, grades K-8. We have had a couple of years where we've had some pilot groups, and our elementary's been using it by far the longest. But it still is very new assessment to us, so we're growing into that. And I'll just remind you all that while we're forced to use it in this capacity, it really is meant to be a tool to inform instruction at the classroom level. As part of our balanced assessment system, it will be another data point to inform school and district-level work, but the power is really in teachers using this.
And it's very individualized, right?
It's very individualized. It's instantaneous reports that teachers and students have access to, and we need to take that next layer in building out the parent communication piece. We did send home the required parent reports, and that will be at a little bit different frequency for next year.
Thanks.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, FFO, we have item 7.1, Mr. Lauterbach with some Study Committee minutes.
Thank you, Scott. Committee met on June 7th, 2021, and discussed April financials. The revenues, expenditures, and transactions above the bid threshold were reviewed. Discussed Bid Package 21-206. Bids were reviewed for signs at elementary schools. A recommendation will be brought, was brought, to the First June Board of Education Meeting. Series 2 bond funds will be utilized if approved. Workers' comp renewal. The administration recommended renewing coverage with Yider Insurance Agency for 2021-2022 to 2022. Seibert Playground bids were accepted to add additional playground equipment to Seibert Elementary. Administration will recommend the award at the June Board of Education Meeting. Capital funds projects will be utilized if approved. We also discussed the 2021-2022 budget. As you'll recall, we had a preview of the 21-22 budget presented at the Board of Education Meeting, along with corresponding documents, the summer tax resolution, and millage rates for 21-22, and the 2021-2022 employee salary letter. Our next meeting will be August 2nd.
All right. Thank you very much. And that'll bring us to our first of a series of action items, item 7.2. This is Staff Device Purchase. Mr. Bruton.
Yep, thank you. Actually, items 7.2 and 7.3 are kind of tied together.
Okay.
And before we get into them, I would like to acknowledge the hard work of our curriculum and technology team in putting together the opportunity to present these to you tonight. Penny Miller-Nelson, Melissa Toner, Dave Dejic get a lot of credit for working with the Alden Invaded Dow Foundation to be able to procure the grants to be able to bring these items to you. So, for 7.2, this was prompted to us by the Board of Education at a meeting. So, we did want to bring this to you, even though it was below threshold, to let you know that the curriculum technology team heard you and have acted upon that request as well, too. So, we're asking you this evening, as a part of that grant request, to allow us to purchase 17 Swivel robot education packages at a price of $1,286 each. When you put that all together, we'd like to give that purchase order to Swivel of Menlo Park, California, who is the sole manufacturer of this package, for a total of $21,862.
Okay. Do you want to talk about 7.3, or do you want us to take action first?
You can take action on 7.2, and then we'll write into 7.3.
Great.
I move for approval of item 7.2, purchase of the Swivels.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hatfield, support by Ms. Singer. Any further discussion regarding 7.2? All in favor, say aye.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. How are we going to distribute these 17? Where are they going to go?
There's a set amount for each building. Secondary being the larger, we'll get more of them than the elementary down. We expect that we'll prime that pump, and the need for many more will come soon. We certainly hope we're never offering virtual due to quarantine and COVID again, but certainly helps with long-term disabilities and students out of the classroom as well, and several other purposes. If you recall, I purchased one of these last August/September, then they weren't available anymore, and we've been using it throughout the district since then, and we've very much fallen in love with them, hence why Penny began to go to work on the grant.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Mr. Bruton, item 7.3.
For 7.3, this is a more widespread distribution, and we are asking for your approval this evening to allow us to purchase 467 Samsung tablets to be utilized by MPS staff. We did bid this out due to the large size of this award, and the low bidder was Sehi Computer Products of Rochester Hills, Michigan, for a grand total of $146,325.11. And this, again, comes from the grant procured from the Alden Invaded Dow Foundation.
Okay. Thank you. I'll accept the motion for item 7.3.
I move to approve the purchase of 467 Samsung tablets for a total of $146,325.11.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Singer, support by Mr. Roush. Any further discussion regarding item 7.3?
Kind of the reoccurring question, are we going to be able to get them?
Dave?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Are we going to be able to get these 467 Samsung tablets? Are they available to us? Will we have them before school starts?
So, the short answer is maybe.
Okay.
The vendor was out. I checked with them again this past week, at the end of the week. They're expecting a shipment in early July, and they're saying we should have them. I'm not holding my breath.
Okay.
Everything we've ordered so far has been put on backorder, so I hope so.
All right.
Our current staff devices are still functional, year 8, 9, 10, somewhere in there. They're very old. And we have, if you recall, you approved those purchases to be replaced. So, this is in addition, more of a tablet model that goes well with the Swivel as well. So, there's some reason behind that, where they both came with the grant. So, this would be an additional tool, Brad, as well. So, even if they don't get it, we're okay. We want them to get here. Those other ones are on their last legs, but...
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion regarding item 7.3? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Next up is item 7.4, another action item, gifts totaling $280,760.
Thank you, sir. Due to the large size of these gifts, we're presenting these as a package of five individual donations, as you mentioned, totaling almost $281,000. The first, $5,000 from AG Financial on behalf of the Maxwell R. Musig Scholarship. Two of them dedicated to the Dow High Turf Project, one from Mid-Michigan Health for $85,000, dedicated toward us being able to procure the scoreboard. And the other is from individual donations that were made to the Midland Community Foundation in the total of $20,452. I would like to point out also that the Midland Lions did a lot of great work for us to donate $5,000 to get us high-interest leveled reader books specifically for our summer programming, which is starting off well and has great enrollment. We thought that we were going to struggle a bit with that enrollment, but the curriculum and building teams did great jobs doing that. And finally, you have heard all about this, but from the Alden Invaded Dow Family Foundation, a total of $165,308 for the tablets and the Swivels that you just approved this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Brian.
Make a motion to accept the gifts in item 7.4.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Roush, support by Mr. Hatfield. Any discussion regarding item 7.4?
Thank you.
Big thank you, yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 7.4 carries. Thank you. Next up, we have item 7.5, Information Only. Mr. Bruton.
Yep. For information, we present nine total gifts that were made totaling $10,672 and some change. And these gifts range all the way from numerous athletic equipment purchase designations on to contributions from Board of Education members to assist students in SAT retake fees. So, we will acknowledge all of those in correspondence from the Board and in the credits to the meeting. We thank all of the individual donors tonight.
Thanks, John.
Okay. Thank you very much. And that'll take us to item 8.1. This is an action item. Mr. Jaster.
Thank you. Staffing process was recently completed for upcoming 21-22 school year. Midland Public Schools Administration finds it necessary to eliminate three electronic learning facilitator positions as a result of decreased enrollment in virtual programs for next fall. The names of the impacted employees are included in the packet and also on the attached resolution. And this resolution will require a roll-call vote.
Actually, it does not require a roll-call vote.
Correct. Yes, this will not be a roll-call vote. So, we will need a motion for it, though.
You have done them when you've had large layoffs prior, certainly to my time. Lynn probably is the one that remembers those, but there's really no requirement unless you feel that it's a very large item, which is pretty standard practice.
I move to approve item 8.1, the staffing changes for upcoming 21-22 year.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Singer, support by Mr. Roush. Any discussion regarding item 8.1? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, Information Only, item 8.2. Mr. Jaster.
Thank you again. The MPS Board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the families of the following former employees. Marjorie E. Battle, she passed away on May 29th, 2021. Marjorie was a teacher at Jefferson Middle School, retired with 27 years of service. Also, to the family of Rita J. Kerr, who worked at Midland High School as a building secretary. Rita retired from MPS with 17 years of service. And then, lastly, to the family of Dwayne R. Brooks, who passed away May 27th, 2021. Dwayne was a member of the MPS Board of Education from 1967 to 1975, and Dwayne served as president, secretary, treasurer, and trustee during his time on the Board.
Okay. Thank you. And that takes us to item 9. Items 9.1 and 9.2, you will find itemized in the meeting agenda, correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Item 10 is our scheduled activities. You'll find itemized in the meeting agenda as well. Our remaining scheduled meetings for 2021. Next up is item 11. This is our study discussion session, where we will clarify or further discuss any points or issues that were raised during this meeting. If there are none, then we will turn the floor over to Mike.
I had a question, Scott.
Sure.
Not our last meeting, which was a budget meeting, but our last regular scheduled meeting, our monthly meeting. I had asked about getting an update from the Health Department, from Fred or from Dr.?
Bodnar.
Thank you. And just wondered where we stood with that and/or if they are interested in coming here and speaking with us and giving us an update and what they feel the recommendations are going to be heading towards the fall from their office?
So, like the budget, everything is expected to be a July-ish announcement. If you listen to the governor, which I hope someone will do, someone's don't anymore, last week she had said that further, after she announced all the lifting restrictions on tomorrow, further clarification for schools in the fall will be following shortly. And my inside track says, don't expect anything before 4th of July, everything will come after the 4th of July, hence why Dr. Bodnar and Fred are waiting before they would like to come in front of you. As well as we hoped, by July 19th, we would be able to present all back-to-normal package for you. And that's where we are right now. And so, I was going to mention my comments, Brad, summer school. Brian mentioned it, great job, our curriculum, our principles. We were really scrambling, we were a little concerned about staff, people are burning at the end of the year. You may hear it in some of our voices tonight, we're getting tired, and it's time for a little break, but our teachers have stepped up, our students and parents have stepped up. I gave Dan Chalk, I think, an estimate of almost 700 kids by the time we're done, not all at one time, maybe get extended learning opportunities, just fabulous job for everyone. We are operating fully normal with our summer schools. There's no testing, there's no mask-wearing, there's no screening. We are sanitizing deeply. That's the one thing I think you'll continue to see unless we're ordered differently, is you'll see the backpack sprayers, and you will see deep cleaning and hand sanitizing and all those methods going forward. We have our air filtration systems still in place, they will always be there, and it's a cost that we'll have, you know, obviously, going forward with filtering on those things. So, I think July board meeting, we should have something to present to you, even though that July board meeting, Brian's a better date personally, falls early, it's July 19th, I believe, off the top of my head, and we hope to make it, but that could be a tight one. And if we're required by law, taking kind of action, we'll have to hold, and miss it, we'll have to hold a special one. But I don't think we are. I think it's going to be, here's some, hey, things if you choose to do, let's go forward, unless this thing reappears and we go the other direction going forward. So, that's my opinion on that. I think I run, but I answered your question there.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mike, I guess you can continue with the rest of your comments. Floor's yours.
Yeah, so I covered that one. Series 1 bond refinancing goes to market next week. We're very excited about that. 2.1, 2, somewhere in there, savings. I think that's what it's estimated right now. And knowing our estimators, we hope to beat that. I don't want to put pressure on them, but we often do. And so, that'd be really good things for taxpayers, reduce that obligation on Series 1. So, that's all set to go. We've been hard, busy behind the scenes producing documents, and ready to go next week. And we've heard nothing but still that we're going to hit the market right and do pretty well. So, we'll see what happens. Mandarin Language, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we piloted a full Mandarin, excuse me, program at Woodcrest Elementary, and then a wheel approach. Penny's cringing as I say that, but probably a better name out there than what I just called there. But four language exposures to the students as well at Adams. And now, it's time to move that program maybe a little further, as well as give them the natural continuum into our middle schools. And so, you saw it tonight in your hiring, there was a Mandarin teacher hired, and we're very excited to move that forward and that option available for our kids as we go forward as well. Restorative practices, you've heard us talk a lot about it. It's really much deeper than what the first thing when you hear restorative practices are. There's really, really, there's a lot of work to do prior to build a community to prevent issues as well. And so, last week, our building administrators spent two full days in training, and we'll continue to move that efforts going forward throughout our buildings going forward. That very much fits diversity, inclusion, as well as wanting to reduce out-of-school time and student discipline. Wrote to you a little bit about the pre-primary center and its continued growth, and so, we added a four-year-old program just recently, another section, as well as our three-year-olds. We were going to move into the robotics hall, but we were able to take the old media center and get that licensed for one of the classrooms, but it looks very apparent that that will continue to expand, and we probably need to remodel the, what's currently being used as robotics, which is going to play into us probably bringing you a proposal to finally take a look at the damaged, no longer can be refurbished pool at Jefferson, and possibly make that a very nice robotics space and continue our preprimaries. All may fit very well together in going forward in the two plans. So just be aware of that. About 150 kiddos over there. We started, if you remember, with one section, maybe five years ago, Brian Penny, and now we're up to over 150 kids that we're servicing that's going to pay, pay huge dividends for down the road for those kids as well as the district. Construction, you see a lot of it. It's not as big summer as some of the big ones we've had, and we have one more summer of that. But all four secondary buildings, you'll see a lot of action. Lot going on at Jefferson, a little less at Northeast, as you know, we've talked about that building, not wanting to overinvest is a short life. Then Midland High and Dow High. Dow has had some extensive work this summer. There's some water lines and some issues going on that are being fixed inside of theirs, with bathrooms. Midland High, a lot of flooring, a lot of bathrooms work as well. So a lot of work throughout the district. Jefferson's probably the largest target this summer, but unless you take the sophistication of the stadium and the place, it's, it's moving, it's moving slowly. We got new pilings up there to hold that press box under that cement forever, I think. You'll never have to worry about that, but that, that structure is unique with it being up there. And so the bleachers are start to go in next week, so we're on time, we're ready to roll there as well. So administration center, we hope to have you back to your first board meeting there in August. We won't make July one. We're kind of hoping to be early, but we think the board meeting will be able to go over there in August. We may not be fully moved back out of here yet, but the board meeting should be able to go over there, as long as IT can get caught up real quick. So that's it.
Okay. All right. We'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. Support. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for sticking around, everybody.
So that, yes, was that, it's just something you did on your own? You saw a request?